I would like to advise all those present that notice of the regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne of August 18, 2021 has provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting was included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the City Clerk in the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the City Clerk and forwarded to the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger by fax and regular mail on August 13, 2021. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council is now in session. Roll call, Ms. Medina, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Galais?
Yeah.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. And before we get started, I just want to do some general announcements. First of all, you know, our present thoughts are with the people in Haiti and Afghanistan. I'd also like to offer condolences to the city tax collector on the loss of her father. And for general announcements, the small business loan, I advise everyone to get your applications in. When is the final date?
20th.
The 20th. So... It may be extended, but do your best to get it in. If you have any questions when you're doing the application, there's an 800 number. I know people who have called it, and they have responded, and there hasn't really been any problems. So I advise all small business owners in town to take advantage of it. I'd also like to talk about, you know, we have on the agenda, we're approving dine-outs along Broadway in the district. We did them last year to help businesses and keep people safe and allow outside dining, so we'll be doing them and closing some streets. So just, I say, watch social media, or watch for announcements and support local businesses when we do do that. I also like to just remind everyone that, you know, COVID is making a little bit of a comeback. We all need to stay diligent and get our vaccines if you're not vaccinated. We actually do so. You can still get vaccinated at the ice rink. And on Wednesdays is Moderna, and Tuesdays and Thursdays is Pfizer. They are, the CDC did come out with advisement that people with corporate mobility, and anyone with underlying conditions are advised to get a third shot. That you can go to the ice rink, no appointment needed. It is recommended that you get the same shot that you had last time. If you had Moderna, to get Moderna. If you had Pfizer, to go on the Pfizer day. At this time, there is no additional shot for people who have taken J&amp;J. But I advise all to keep watching the CDC recommendations and follow them and maintain social distances. I'd also like to just talk about, before our next meeting, September 11 will have happened. There's a number of events. It's going to be the 20th year, so there's a number of events that are going to go on throughout the city. Please check social media, the city webpage, to find out what exactly is planned. I do know that Frank Stiller, the brother of Stephen Stiller, who died in 9/11, and he has the Tunnel to Towers Fund, he's doing a walk, starting from the Pentagon, and he's walking and stopping at all the sites. And he will wind up at the Trade Center on September 11. He will be walking over the Bayonne Bridge. He is scheduled to come over the Bayonne Bridge and walk through Bayonne, and that is scheduled to come in on the 9th and 10th. So just watch, we are going to organize something. I know I've talked to some of the local organizations and our veterans, American Legion, and to plan something to cheer him on and support him. It is a fundraiser. You know, they support not only people from 9/11, but veterans and anyone who loses their life in joint service. So there are some things. And I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Labor Day, because, and remember to celebrate, but also to be safe, social distance, wear your mask, and get vaccinated. Okay, Madeline, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to take little things out of order. Richard Cooper from Hunger Free United in the Community is going to address the council first, and then we're going to go into our regular agenda. So, Mr. Cooper?
My name is Richard Cooper. I'm resident of Bayonne, and I'm here tonight representing Hunger Free Unity in the Community, formerly known as Hunger Free Bayonne. My son has a packet. If at all possible, we could maybe hand it to somebody that could pass out to you.
Sure.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, that's a packet that we put together just to introduce ourselves to the council tonight and talk a little bit about our history and our future plans. All right, Hunger Free Unity in the Community was founded by Stephanie Glover-Wilson. Originally, it was Hunger Free Bayonne, and it was founded back in 2014. We've been servicing Bayonne all those years, and then COVID hit, and then there was a situation and dynamics changed. And at that point, we had to start traveling throughout Hudson County, and we've been giving out food every single week, sometimes two, three times a week during this COVID crisis. Back when we were Hunger Free Bayonne, we were working under the umbrella of BEOF 501(c)(3). During this time, we've organized ourselves, and we've created a nonprofit organization, New Jersey nonprofit organization named Hunger Free Unity in the Community, with our own 501(c)(3) that is geared to and ready to... It's, there are all different types of 501(c)(3)'s you could do. We're more geared to giving out food. Our whole volunteer base is all volunteer. There are no paid positions. Stephanie's been working 30 years throughout Hudson County in different various organizations, giving of her time freely. And the one, I don't know if, I'm a little prejudiced, but right now, I think the one closest to her heart is Hunger Free. She refuses to let anybody go to bed hungry. She's gotten calls 10 o'clock at night, and she'll go through her own cupboards and give food out. She's just an amazing woman. Our board members, we have presidents, vice presidents, secretary of treasurers, recorders. Everything's ready to go, and it has been going. We've been organized and a 501(c)(3) over the past year, 14 months maybe now. So we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to allow us to talk tonight. Our organization is 100% charity-based, and our success is not only supported by partner companies such as HelloFresh and Costco, but also our dedicated volunteers working with us day and night, 365 days a year. We're supporting needs of churches, shelters, senior centers, as well as offloading hundreds of pounds of food and distributing them to those in need every Saturday, no matter the weather, rain, sleet, snow. We're out there, we've had to actually shovel parking lots to give food out. I believe we're pretty well-known in Bayonne, from different various locations that we've been going to. And our proposal tonight is to request the support and the aid from the City of Bayonne to probably help us procure a location where we can dedicatedly give out a central location, where we could give out food on a regular basis, on every Saturday, and maybe a little bit of help with procuring a space to store stuff during the week. We're not looking, we'd like, but we're not looking for right at this point, some sort of financial aid, but we have been doing pretty well raising funds on our own and going out and hitting corporations and asking them for donations and stuff. But it's basically just enough just to put gas in a truck that a local company allows us to use on occasion, that, you know, that we can go distribute food. Most of our food is delivered to us, but it does get expensive after a while to do something for free. Our mission statement is to enable and provide communities the ability to provide for themselves with fresh produce, vegetables, spices, and giving them nutritious foods to eat. In that publication that I handed you, there are different, different news articles about us. There's links. Unfortunately, it's paper, so you can't just click on it. So if you wanted to see stuff, you would have to, you know, look it up by the name and everything. And basically, we're requesting to go forward in a positive fashion with the city with maybe help, like I said, procuring a location that we could be, get to known as, this is where you're going to go every Saturday and get food. We find that works very well. Maybe a little bit of support when it comes to controlling crowds and things like that. So we'd really like you to consider being able to, we'd like to be able to consider the City of Bayonne as a partner with us, with our 501(c)(3), and being able to give out food and be able to maybe purchase food. Right now, we rely on donations, but I believe there are different programs where we could buy ready-made boxes and stuff like this that we'd be able to hand out, and, you know, we would need some help with that. And guidance, I mean, we are, Stephanie Wilson's been doing this for 30 years, and Hunger Free Bayonne has been, Hunger Free Unity, Hunger Free Unity in the Community, formerly known as Hunger Free Bayonne, has been in existence since 2014. So she really knows what to do, and she's very efficient at what she does. And she's very dedicated at what she does. So we're really looking forward to having some sort of a relationship with the city on a positive going-forward thing with some help and guidance and procurement of a location. Doesn't have to be, you know, it's a location that we need on Saturdays. I have a couple in mind, I guess, I don't know if this would be the time to talk about it or not, but to centrally locate it, and like I said, maybe if we can get a little help with trying to find a storage facility. I know a vehicle would probably be asking too much, but of course, we wouldn't say no to one, or guidance on how to get one, you know, with our 501(c)(3) and our nonprofit organization. And we do have a legal representation that he has also donated his time to help us out, you know, when we need some help. So we're really here to ask for some help and be able to take care of the City of Bayonne and get the food out to the people and see some familiar faces that we've been missing during this pandemic.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Familiar with all that Stephanie and the entire crew has been doing. They've done a phenomenal job for years here in Bayonne when she first started. And we would love to welcome back and have a regular, because we all know that food insecurity is a real issue, and the pandemic has only heightened it, and we know the needs there. There is funds available, but that you would have to go through, I would suggest you meet with Sam Howard. They control all those kinds of funds, those grant monies come through the CDBG funding, and which we then transfer to BEOF, because they are a charitable arm of the city. So there is money available, and, you know, you have the right certification as nonprofit. I'm sure she can work something out, because there was a larger sum of money that she got for food insecurities to satisfy that. As far as a location and working with the city, I'm all for it. I'm sure all my councilpeople are 100% for it.
Everybody's good?
We don't have, unfortunately, we're not the body that can grant you the permission. We're not the administrative branch. We've been told a number of times that how we were step our bounds by doing that. You'd have to, the mayor would have to approve the location, and I, so I would suggest that you schedule, I mean, we'll all sign a statement saying that we're in favor and urge the administration to support you in every way possible. That is not a problem. But we can't sit here and, and we're not, we can't allocate the city workers to go do something, or the city space, that would have to be done by the mayor only, and that's, has to be done from the administrative side, not the legislative side. As far as funding, if they, of course, we approve that as the legislative body, and we certainly will. We have no qualms about that, because I understand how real the problem is. And I do understand, and I do follow on Facebook and all the good things, and that you guys are giving out all around the county. And I thank you, I thank you all for your time, effort. I know it's an exuberant amount of time and energy that goes into it, and I can't imagine doing it on the large scale that you do. We're grateful for you. We love to have you. We definitely need it back in Bayonne. The more days that food are being given out to the people in Bayonne, the better for all of Bayonne. But like I said, unfortunately, it's not us that can enter into those agreements. We don't have that authority. But I would suggest, and certainly we can send this over to the mayor's office, but I would suggest you schedule, call the mayor's office and schedule with him to sit down and have that conversation.
That's, that's perfect. That's exactly what we're looking for, to come to the board or the council and get advice. Like, now we know you guys are okay with this, and we're going to go forward, and we're going to be positive, and now I know to reach out to the mayor's office and bounce around some suggestions on locations and stuff like that.
Does any of my colleagues, if anything, they want to say, or add?
Yeah, I think you guys do a great job. I've known for years the job you do. I actually would like to speak to you privately about a couple, they're not city-owned properties, but something that might, might help you out.
Absolutely.
We would have to talk to those people first, so I wouldn't want to mention who I can, but I think I might be of help.
It sounds very, I'm embarrassed to say I don't know your name.
Gary LaPalooza.
Gary LaPalooza, okay.
Stephanie.
Really good, nice to meet you. I just, he's my councilman, so I know him. No, this is fantastic, and I'm really looking forward to working with the City of Bayonne and getting the food out to the people. And it's not just food, it's nutritious food. It's vegetables, it's bread, it's orange juice, it could be anything.
Yes.
Oh, could, could Steph?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Everybody knew who I am. Started in Bayonne, worked here every Saturday. Things happen. We're here to bring peace, and I know a couple of my board members are going to be upset at me, but my mother always taught me, if you hurt someone's feelings, you need to apologize to them. And I did not appreciate the article that came out of this office. I did not appreciate Neil's carols.
I can't hear you.
I did not appreciate the article that came out of, out of this office saying that we abandoned Bayonne, because we did not abandon Bayonne. Also, we had to drop the name Bayonne, because Melissa Mathis, your businessperson, bought Hunger Free Bayonne in five different tents, so we couldn't use it anymore. So that's why we had to change our name.
Okay.
But there should be apology from this council, to my volunteer.
I still know that we, a letter came out from, if I offended or any, if we sent a letter, I don't think there was a letter that ever came out saying from this, from the council?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
I'm not aware of it, and if it did, I certainly do apologize, because it should have never happened, and it's not the feeling that you abandoned Bayonne. Stephanie, I know you've come back when you have stuff. I share your events all the time so that the people can, you know, I know you've been doing it on Avenue E a lot when you have stuff, so I'm aware that you come back. I know you've, you had a bigger calling, and you're helping a lot of people all around throughout, and you've become way bigger than, than what you were here as far as even as amount of donations and, and stuff you get. So I'm, I do apologize if that came out from any, anybody on this council or this council as a whole, because that was never an intention, and it was not a feeling that any of us have.
Thank you.
She's very dedicated.
We all know that. We all thank her for her dedication.
Mr. Cooper, I just want to say thank you for helping the people of Bayonne.
This is not me, this is us.
Well, thank you all for helping the people of Bayonne. We're a city in need, and Ms. Glover, she worked very hard, I remember that. She was always involved. And Mr. Cooper, thank you. And anything that we can do from this side, we'll try and help you to get your location. And again, thank you very much, and there's a wing in your name up in heaven.
All right, we appreciate your time so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now to the regular agenda, which is BA1, is the hearing of the calendar year 2021 municipal budget, which was approved at the meeting of July 14, 2021, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board by summary as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered following a public hearing at this meeting of April 18, 2021, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And Councilman LaPalooza moved a resolution giving the budget a second reading by title. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, the calendar year 2021 Local Municipal Budget. And the council is now ready to recognize all persons interested in this budget, will be given the opportunity to be heard. Any questions on the budget?
Oh, Ms. Gadesky?
Galesky, 828 Kennedy Boulevard. Good evening. Just a couple of questions. Oh, sorry. Just a couple of questions on the budget. Is the American Rescue Program funds in its own separate account that we receive from the federal government? Is it in a separate account?
Yes, no, Ms. Mauer will answer it. You can, you can answer it, or CFO?
The portion that we anticipate to use is in this year's budget, yes, underneath the grants. It's in the revenue side and the appropriation side, in separate accounts.
Okay, so it has its own separate account?
Yes, that's required.
Okay. And then, is all the appropriations, just like all the other financial things that come to the board, is that going to be approved by the council before they're appropriated?
Yes, any, any claim, anything that's spent has to go before the council.
Okay. So my understanding is the small business loan program that was advertised as Jimmy Davis's Bayonne Business Plan is American Rescue Program money, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, was that approved by the council to put that money aside for the small business grants?
It's in this budget.
It's in the budget, okay. So they'll be approving it today, next week, next month?
Tonight.
Tonight, okay. And then, looking at the budget, Donna, the $500,000 that was allocated to, from the county to the city for the walkway to Nowhere, from the county, it says anticipated funds. Did they commit to that yet?
There is no, we don't have any.
It's not in the budget.
It's not in the budget. It was, I think she's referring to asking why it's not.
Yeah.
It was in the, it was a press release saying we got it.
Yeah, it's a line item, but it's, isn't it anticipated? And if, we didn't get the money yet?
I can only anticipate it once I receive an award. If we receive an award letter, then I can anticipate it. It's not in this budget.
Oh, okay. I must have been looking at something else, so...
I think it was last, last year we got 500,000. It was in the budget.
Yeah.
But I, but I think referring to the, no, but we, there was a new press release about the county giving us money for the walkway.
So you didn't receive anything yet, even though there, like President Nedrowski said, there was a press release saying we got it?
Right, but I need an official letter, an award letter stating that we're going to receive the funds before I'm allowed to insert it into the budget.
Okay, when do you, do you anticipate it, anytime soon?
Really don't know.
Okay.
Not much on that.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Henderson?
I, I understand that in the budget, there was supposed to be $20,000 put aside for a TNR program that is very much needed. I wanted to know if that is going to be a separate item where it can never be changed or used for anything else? That it's going to be just for TNR and nothing else it can be used for, can't disappear into the general budget?
Well, we did meet Councilman LaPalooza and myself at the meeting. We asked to increase the Health Department's budget by 20,000, because that's where that would run the operated out of, but I'm looking now, is it a separate line item? It's not.
No, it's not a separate line item. It's included in other expenses.
Um, okay.
25,000.
25, oh, Gary, you got your extra five. So, okay.
So in other words, it's in with other things that maybe it won't be used for TNR, it could be used for other things?
I mean, we can encumber it, we... Once there's a contract, once something's approved by the council, then those funds are held. But until then, they're just in the account. Soon as a contract is awarded, prior to that, I have to hold the funds and encumber the funds to make sure they're available to pay, so...
Okay, so I guess what we're saying is, so then we could enter into a contract with our animal control committing the 25,000 to it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll have to do a resolution doing that. I don't know if there has to be another process.
Yeah, because I don't want it to disappear. We've been waiting too long. Bayonne is overrun with cats, and especially with COVID. It has gotten worse. We need the money. It's been promised to us over and over again. I don't want it to disappear into a general fund for this, that, and the other. It's got to be specifically for TNR with our animal control.
I'll make sure that it gets spent the right way. That's why I asked for it to be increased.
Thank you.
To make sure that money gets put to good use. I think if we get a contract, say, up to 25,000, then we know where that money could be spent, and then we can put that money out for that.
And that can be increased over time as needed, because this is a process.
This year, maybe in the future, we'll discuss it and see.
Decision's almost over. I don't do, you know, we're more than halfway through the year, so...
But I mean, it's a council decision, so yes, we can revisit that.
Okay, you'll be speaking with animal control to get this contract in place?
Yeah, we can do that. We can, we can work on that tomorrow, actually, so we'll have it for next month.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Franco?
Good evening, City Council. Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. I just wanted to add, or I guess, you know, one of the topics that I was planning to speak about was brought up, so I just kind of want to add to it. So I read in the paper with the 500,000 from the county for the continuation of the West Side Walkway from Veterans to 16th. You explained why it's not in the budget. You didn't receive an official award, Ms. Mauer. So I guess my question to you is, why do you think the mayor would put out a press release when you have not received?
I can't answer that. I can't answer that.
I don't know.
Do you have to get the mayor's opinion, or?
Do I?
Well, I just asked you a direct question.
No, I don't, I can't answer that.
You don't have an opinion on it? All right.
The finance officer. I'm just doing the numbers.
Well, I would just imagine he would make it a little difficult for you when he's out there with a press release, and you don't actually have the funds yet. Oh, no? Okay. I'll keep that noted, thank you. All right, so on to the bigger issues in the budget. I see 30% of our budget goes to pay for police and fire salaries. Councilman Perez, you were a sheriff, you should know a lot about this. Do you know how much the salaries were raised for the captains, lieutenants, and the top brass?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
You got to ask.
I'm going to, I just want to go on the record, because you're asking about the contract that is a conflict of interest for me, and when this was voted on, I did not receive the contract. I recused myself, I walked off the dais. So if you're having conversations about the superior police officers' contract, I'm just going to spit back, and I'm going to stay out of it, because I was never involved in it and never read it, and it's a conflict for me. So all those questions will be directed. I'll ask Councilman at large Juan Perez to be the chair for this topic, because you guys voted on it. I recused myself because of a conflict.
Okay. Councilman LaPalooza, I guess the same question. Do you know how much the increase in salaries was to Bayonne's top brass?
No, I don't.
Councilman Carroll?
Don't have a specific dollar figure.
Councilman Galais?
Sorry, don't answer the same question.
You know, it's, it's, do you know if the, if our city's police superiors are the highest paid in the county? Would you take a, take a guess maybe on that, as a result of this contract?
What was that used to?
Would be, ultimately, our police superiors, would they be the highest paid in the county as a result of this contract? What would you think, yes or no?
I can't answer that.
All right. All right, so I could imagine, considering that police and fire salaries account for a third of the city's budget, you know, it's pretty significant. We shouldn't have elected officials that don't know what the increase is, especially when it's going into a budget, which you guys are going to vote for. The increase is a whopping 26.7% increase. That's a 1.7 increase, but what also is not revealed is that the 25% increase of the base salaries because of the time change for the hours and shift that the police superiors will be working. Police captain gets paid over $200,000 now. A lieutenant gets $180,000. A lieutenant gets $180,000. And a sergeant gets $160,000. There's no sense of going to college anymore. You just go to the mayor's function, get a fundraiser, get on the police list, and you'll be set for life.
Are you suggesting that our officers don't have a college education?
Mr. Carroll, I didn't ask you a question yet. You didn't have an answer before, and now you want to interject. I would, I would work on getting those numbers.
That was a great response.
Thank you. Now, how are we ready to approve a contract and vote on a budget when we clearly are unaware of the details? You know, reading in the papers and online and news sources, we see more and more crime in our city. And yet, we will have less police working longer shifts, but what we really need is more patrolmen. But their contract hasn't even been settled. And I wonder where the priority of our safety in this community is. Will there be enough money to settle the contract for the patrolmen? I guess my next question, you know, is, was the table of organization ever redone? Does anybody know of that? That's an honest question, I don't have the answer for that.
In connection with this latest?
In connection. So because ultimately, people that would be awaiting, you know, promotion, all of that will depend on that. So let's say, for example, you turn around and you change the table of organization, there could be some people waiting to get promoted that had worked for the city for 20-some-odd years, and they're waiting to hit that brass, and ultimately, they're stuck like Chuck if there's, if there's a change in that. So I think people should know the details of these things. That's why it's important, you know, when we look at the budget, everybody's got to kind of know what's going on here. I want to also close with the, the Business Administrators Department is down over $100,000 in this latest budget. I, are we rehiring an assistant business administrator? What's ultimately going on there? The Law Department's up over $50,000, and I'm just kind of, you know, trying to figure that out. What was the reasoning behind that in this budget?
One less employee in the Business Administrators Office. The assistant business administrator is no longer employed here.
So we're not, would you be safe on going on record that we're not going to replace that position?
I can't say that on record.
Well, we don't have it allocated in the budget, so if we do?
That's a good conclusion to draw.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do we have any questions online?
I have a comment. I'd like to defend our hard-working and excellent police force, well-educated, upstanding citizens, and I've said this in the past when they've been promoted and I've gone to those ceremonies. I lay my head to rest at night, very comfortable that these men are out on the streets, and then I was disgusted by the suggestion that they're somehow less than.
And the mention of table of organization was, the table of organization was always written with vague language, so the numbers could be worked. And I was a councilman many, many years ago.
It can't be heard. They're having trouble hearing you. Press your button.
Put my mic, tell your microphone.
When I was a councilman many years ago, that table of organization, they were way over the numbers that were in there. And the table of organization is written so that it says up to so many of a certain rank. So it's really for maximum numbers, not necessarily minimum numbers, and it's way lower than it was when I was first a councilman in 2006.
And to add that, Mr. Franco, these people, these, these police officers and these firefighters, they study to take that examination to be promoted. They don't get it as a political appointment. They work very hard. They leave their families behind, and they, they study very hard. And once they take that exam, then they move up slowly.
I gather I have no speakers online, so I will move to close this portion of the hearing. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close this portion of the hearing, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski?
Aye.
I have a resolution ordering, a resolution to amend the budget. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Move, second.
Okay, this is going to be read in full, so bear with me. Whereas the local municipal budget for the calendar year 2021 was approved on the 14th day of July 2021, and whereas the public hearing of said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desirous to amend said approved budget, now therefore be resolved by the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, that the following amendments to the approved budget of the calendar year 2021 be made. General revenue surplus anticipated from $6,998,267 to $7,528,380, with the total surplus anticipated from $6,998,260 to $7,698,267,278,380. Miscellaneous revenue section A, Costco Bayonne redevelopment block 700 from $106,768,32 to $101,429,90. Barnabas Bayonne from $300,000 to $285,000. Alexa City View, one, from $1,96,699,90 to $1,41,864,91. Bayonne Energy Urban Renewal 1, from $1,588,445 to $1,509,022,75. Bayonne Energy Urban Renewal 2, from $511,555 to $485,977,25. Prince Holding from $310,000 to $294,500. 195 East 22nd Street, from $69,947,64 to $66,450,25. Silk Loss from $211,124,99 to $200,568,74. Port Authority from $103,766 to $98,577,70. Port Authority Workbench from $402,240 to $382,128. Port Authority Global Auto Marine Terminal from $1,106,468 to $1,551,144,60. Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, from $368,652,65 to $350,222,20. Aon Bay Developers Urban Renewal from $823,788 to $782,598,60. PSIP from $115,335,23 to $109,568,47. North Street Properties from $125,000 to $118,750. 230 dash 250 Avenue E, $101,801 to $96,710,95. Bayonne 19th Street Urban Renewal from $343,209,12 to $326,48,66. 662 Avenue C, from $47,257,098 to $44,895,8. 160 East 22nd Street is from $124,067,36 to $104,500. 190 West 54th Street, Woodmount, from $199,160 to $189,202. Hobart Housing Renewals from $12,179,52 to $11,570,54. MHP 222 Avenue E Urban Renewal from $54,900 to $52,155. PSP, PSIP Avenue A Urban Renewal from $189,322,20 to $179,856,77. Bayonne Equities Urban Renewal, Urban Renewal from $222,853,62 to $211,710,94. 957 dash 965 Broadway Urban Renewal from $122,366,45 to $116,248,13. KRE Fleet Urban Renewal from $278,078,36,264,174. Section B Consolidated Municipal Property Tax Relief Aid from $946,119 to $835,717. Energy V C Tax from $7,883,682 to $7,994,84. Summary of revenues, the surplus anticipation from $6,998,267 to $7,528,380. Total section A Local Revenues, from $13,442,162,80 to $12,982,49. Total miscellaneous revenue from $47,595,78,21 to $47,134,957,21. Total, total local tax for municipal purposes, including the reserve for uncollected taxes, from $82,679,270,76 to $82,679,271,12. Total amount to be raised by taxes for support of the municipal budget from $95,772,573,18 to $95,722,573,54. Total general revenue is $150,472,901,74 to $150,542,901,75. General appropriations, operations within caps, which elections, other expenses from $40,000 to $110,000. Fire other expenses, $475,000 to $442,264. Total operations within caps is $91,484,180,91 to $91,521,444. Total operations including contingents within caps is $91,485,180 to $91,522,444. Total general appropriations for municipal purposes within, I'm sorry, other expenses is from $33,155,500 to $33,192,764. And total general appropriations for municipal purposes within the caps, Almost there. Total general appropriations for municipal purpose excluded from caps from $33,397,864,76 to $33,441,694,76. Subtotal general appropriations, $141,520,446,51 to $141,520,946,51. Reserve for uncollected taxes is $1,730,302,55 to $1,730,49,13. Total general appropriations is $143,250,849,6 to $143,250,955,64. And under the municipal debt services excluded from taxes, capital lien payments from $0 to $32,736,000. The total municipal service excluded from caps is $13,671,365 to $13,704,101. And under the emergency authorizations, from $43,430 to $0. Special emergency authorization of five years, from $149,578 to $193,08. Huh? I know. Thank God. This is the most part of the job I hate, budget time. Total general appropriations excluded from taxes is $39,147,532,19 to $39,180,268,19. The subtotal general appropriations from $149,378,367,88 to $149,441,367,88. And reserve for uncollected taxes from $1,102,533,86 to $1,102,533,87, which makes the total general appropriations from $150,472,901,74 to $150,542,901,75. And who would like to, on that amendment, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski?
Aye.
Are there any questions on the amendment? Or are there any questions online from the amendments?
No, here's the reason.
Okay. With that being said, I have a resolution ordering the final adoption of the calendar year 2021. Who'd like to move it?
So move.
Second.
And on the adoption of the budget, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski?
Aye.
Oh, one is.
Madeline, I'd like to talk on this first.
Sure, go ahead.
I want to move, I know we're seeing postponed, and I'm moving this ordinance. I think it's time to end the charade and remove the threat of eminent domain. This has been on the council in general for several months now. Local finance has not taken any actions. We all know that this needs four votes to pass. We know Councilman Galice is abstaining, and that I'm going to vote no. So I don't think we should continue to entertain this financially disastrous proposal. We know Bayonne Hospital is not closing. HRH, the current property owners, have agreed to preserve Bayonne Medical, Bayonne Hospital at no cost or risk to the city taxpayers. BMC, another private party, is also interested in operating the hospital. In May, HRH provided a letter indicating its willingness to drop any litigation with regards to the zoning changes. HRH has also agreed to enter into negotiations with Bayonne to give us a right of first refusal, which means that any decision they make to change its use or to, or to not operate the hospital anymore, we have the right to buy it. Also came out today in a press release that HRH has secured long-term financing for the Bayonne Hospital. So finances are not an issue, if people were concerned about that. Bayonne Hospital will continue to operate for generations to come. Defeating this ordinance is a win for the taxpayers of Bayonne. Therefore, I motion that we call a vote and to vote, to reject this administration's attempt at eminent domain. And I'll vote first. Yes.
I need, well, I need a second.
Oh, you have to, do you want to read it in full?
Well, it's, you moved the motion to end the consideration of the ordinance, which you would be withdrawing it. You need a second for that.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If you're abstaining, you can't, you can't.
Okay.
I'm abstaining, so they told me I couldn't vote, make it second.
Okay, I'd just like to say, you know, gentlemen, that, um, you know, I think it's time that you take a stand. that you take a stand for what's right for the residents of Bayonne. It can't pass, but, you know, I just think, you know, the time has come, it's been several months that this is on our agenda, and we just keep moving it along. But, thank you.
So I'd like to make a comment. I'm not generally for eminent domain, although in this case, this is more of a business deal than more of taking away for the better good of, of the community. And I just don't think I should have to vote on this because this might be all a moot point if the local finance board comes back and says, you can't use it, so you wouldn't even have to vote on this. But for right now, I'd like to hear what they have to say and see what their findings are before I second or even vote on this.
So with no second on that motion, that motion is defeated. So we take up with the, um, resolution postponing final passage of the ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement with the Hudson County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of up to ninety-five million aggregated principal amount of the authority's city's guaranteed lease revenue bonds in anti, um, of any notes issued in anticipation thereof by the Hudson County Improvement Authority to the meeting of September twenty-second. Who'd like to move it? Do you?
This is a motion to postpone.
This is mostly to postpone it to September. The motion to withdraw the resolution has, was defeated. It didn't go through.
I'll move to postpone.
And on the resolution to postpone, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
You shouldn't be voting. You were gonna abstain.
I don't know what the hell.
Abstaining, yes.
Abstaining.
I'll call my name.
Oh, it's early yet. Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye, and I have to say that I agree with Mr. La Palusa, let's wait for the financing.
And Ms. Nedrowski?
No, it's been far too long. Can't pass.
Okay. Resolution is post, the ordinance is postponed to September. Miss, okay, second one is also to postpone the final passage of an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, state of New Jersey, authorizing the guarantee of the payment of the principal and interest of not to exceed ninety-five million dollars aggregate principal amount of the city's guaranteed lease revenue bond to be issued by the Hudson County Improvement Authority for the purpose of providing additional security therefore and determining certain other matters in connection therewith to the meeting of September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Who'd like to move it?
We have someone to speak.
We have a hand raised in the audience.
Okay. Um, we'll take him after Mr. Franco.
Peter Franco, one oh nine West Fifty-third Street. I just want to know, you know, what are we waiting for, for the local finance board to say? Like, what is it that you guys are looking for to hear? Like, again, you want to hear what they have to say, but what in specific? We all know, we've, we've been dealing with this process now for months. So I think it's just a fair question. I mean, if you guys want to vote to postpone it for that reason, can you please explain to me and to the public maybe as to why, you know, what specifically are you waiting for? What do you want to hear from the finance board that's going to be, you know?
I think they're waiting for the local finance board to, to determine whether or not this is a proper action on behalf of the, the city and the Hudson County Improvement Authority. They've got to approve any financing like this. If they come back and say it can't be done, there's no decision to be made here.
I, I totally understand that, but it's not like there's anything that's actually changing, other than the authority granting that. So I just feel like it's a grandstand dragging this thing out as we're going. I mean, if you, you're saying, hey, this is what I would like to see, X, Y, and Z, then totally fine. But if you're simply saying, we're waiting on the authority for that, it's just kicking the can down the road. I mean, we're doing the same thing over and over again. And clearly, it's not going to pass because, you know, Councilman Galice is abstaining, the council president objects to this, and you guys don't have enough votes. So what's the point?
There may not be a point at all if they turn around and say you can't do this.
Well, but if, if you voted alongside council president right now, this thing would have been done, would have been dead.
I just gave you my reasons why.
I, I understand, it just doesn't make sense to me, there's no clear reason other than them to say that, but I respect that, thank you.
Who'd like to move the resolution?
I know we have somebody online, I thought.
Oh, just online question, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
George Ramirez, three nine seven Avenue C. I just wanted to add that currently there are two proposals before the local finance board, one from H R H and one from Bayonne Medical Center. That is all.
Thank you.
And who'd like to move the resolution for postponement?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
I have to, no.
No.
No, you have to abstain.
Okay.
You're abstaining.
George Ramirez, put your hand back up again.
Okay.
Let us finish our vote, we'll let him comment after.
Okay, Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
I'm going to say no again, as I think this has gone on way far too long.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Ramirez, you may unmute him, so let him finish his comment.
I, I raised my hand by mistake.
Oh, three is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, authorizing the vacation of a portion of Mechanic Street right away, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember La Palusa, given the ordinance second reading. Ms. Nedrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, authorizing the vacation of a portion of Mechanic Streets right away. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Okay. Looks like there's no.
No hands raised online.
Okay, thank you. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Some move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Some move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
Oh, four is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Twenty Personnel, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held July fourteenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with, with notice that it would be further considered following a public, following a public hearing at this meeting of August eighteenth, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And resolution moved by Councilmember La Palusa, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. La Palusa, will you second?
You want me to move it and second?
No, I want, I want Mr. Perez to move it, and Mr. La Palusa to second.
So you want me to second it?
Yes, please.
Second.
I'm sorry. It's a long day. An ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Twenty Personnel. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Ms. Gadeski? I know we also have.
No hands raised online.
I just wanted clarification on this one. Is this the one where they want to go outside the city to hire people in higher positions that nobody here in Bayonne is qualified for?
This is for strictly related to the, the only changes to the, for the housing authority? The only change is for the housing authority. They are really not part of the city, their employees are not under the city's umbrella, but for some reason, civil service is holding them, after all these years, to our residency requirements, just to clarify, it makes a statement that says they are not bound by our residency requirements. I will say, I know Mr. Bahin is on the line, that they are, they, housing has, I think, sixty-three, or sixty-seven employees, and sixty-three of them are Bayonne residents. They do hire within Bayonne. This is, this need came about because of attrition at higher levels, and it requires people with certain certifications and a certain number of years of experience to fill these higher level positions, because usually they do hire, make every effort to hire within. And in order to get them, they have to go to people in other towns who have actually had this experience. So they are looking to fill some very high level positions, and they needed a letter for us to adjust this, so that civil service will let them continue how they always have operated outside of, they're not employees at the city of Bayonne.
Thank you, but I must commend them. At least they follow the policy and the law. Thank you.
Are there any other hands raised? Hand raised online?
No hands raised online.
No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Some move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
Oh, five is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Seven Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held July fourteenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August eighteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And resolution moved by the council president, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Seven Traffic. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak on this ordinance. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Some move, second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution ordering final passage, it's Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
Okay. Now we come to the public comments portion, and our first speaker is Gail Gadeski.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, COVID's on the ramp again, so here's my question. A lot of the municipalities, the states, the corporations, all the businesses are mandating people be vaccinated. If they're not vaccinated, they need to get tested weekly. What are the city doing for its employees? Three of our employees have passed away from this disease. Is anybody looking at considering taking care of the employees that work day in and day out for this city to ensure that this building is safe?
Oh, that would be, I haven't seen a directive from the mayor that would come from the mayor's office, any directives about change in protocol. We have not received, we have not received one of recent.
And decision hasn't been made yet as to whether or not we're going to, the administration's going to mandate vaccinations at this point.
Okay. Before I get into my comments, Director Carter, what's going on in the front? It looks the same as last month. Nine eleven is, is less than a month away. It looks terrible out there.
We've been working on the fountain wall, we're working, we're doing this on the right-hand side of the building, my left as it faces here, we've cleared out the area for the monument that's going in. So by nine eleven, everything will be over.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like to ask about the Bayonne Grant Program. Where is the money coming from? Taxpayer dollars? I think CFO Mauer, you responded that it is federal grant money, correct?
You talking about the small business loans?
The small business loans, that is coming from the American Rescue Program, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Reading the newspaper, I see that it's Bayonne Grant Program. So why, if it's coming from the American Rescue Program, why is it stating Jimmy Davis Business Grant Program? It's not. It's the federal government. I think that's a little, a little touchy feely for me. If you could please add mortgage assistance to one of the purposes, as well as senior programs, to the committee's outreach regarding how to spend the rest of the money?
Well, can I just pause you there? There was a committee formed for the ARPA money. It consisted of two councilpeople, myself and Gary La Palusa, our CFO, Director of Public Works, Public Safety's Director in the B A, and Ken Posen, who sits on the board of the B O F. There is a survey out there, it is not on the city's website unfortunately, where it actually does ask people for input. I have shared it, I know it's on Bayonne Talks Anything, or one of those, I know it's on Black in Bayonne. I will reshare it tonight and have them reshare it, because it does ask for the residents' input into what they would like to see that money, and we want your input so that we can spend it how the Bayonne residents best need it. It does have that out there, mortgage is one of the options. We, it acts about infrastructure, about food insecurity, about mental health, about education, about childcare, infrastructure, flooding. It acts, it has a number of things that, that's allowable, or, or we think is allowable to be spent on. We can't just spend it on whatever we want, there are guidelines, and they're kind of stringent and a little narrow in what we can spend it on. But I do encourage everyone, you can find it on, like I said, on my social media, I don't know if Councilman La Palusa has shared it, but I'd ask them all to share it, and like I said, it's on a number of other websites, but, and Facebook pages. So please go out there and let us know, we want to know what you need, so we can best address those needs.
Thank you. How is it being monitored? How is the survey? Because you could go in fifteen times and put in different things, you could just keep on, if you remember something, you could go back in and you could do it.
There's no, there's no limit. We do ask you, it, it's anonymous, it can be, but we do ask you to put your information if you want to. It's helpful for us to get back to you and have dialogue if necessary, but it's more than, you know, but all, all surveys are like that, there's no control. It's really just a community input survey.
Okay, so you're, how are you monitoring it?
What do you, we just get, it, it just sorts everyone's results, and we see, yeah. So there's no control to say you can't take it more than once, quite frankly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Now, do we have a employee or a contract for grant writing? Do we have somebody that's qualified in-house to do grant writing?
We have two different companies, one for state and one for federal grants.
Okay, I thought we did.
I don't know if we have other ones additionally. They're the only two. But I do know we have some police officers and some firefighters who also do some grant writing for themselves also, in addition to the other grant writers that we contract with.
Okay, so, the bridge is falling down, water main break, roads cracking, sinkholes, also others, another suggestion, I'm sure many, many grants available for clean energy. Why can't someone look into a grant to get the motor fixed on our windmill? Tim Boyle noted that it would cost a lot of money. There's a lot of grants out there, I did the research. All we need is somebody to write the grants up, and we could start doing clean energy here in Bayonne. It's dirty enough. It used to be a great think tank here, but now I'm beginning to wonder. I'm very disappointed in the administration. I never thought the day would come that I would say that. I was never against any administration, standing here today and saying, I am very disappointed. A city, over seventy thousand people, with buildings going up left and right, and everybody, I believe in my opinion, is worried about their own careers, own careers, getting their kids and family jobs, while preparing to leave the city and move south. How sad is that? Yes, it's true. We all know, it's, it's true. It's Bayonne. There's no secrets, and Bayonne, we all know that. We should be nicknamed Peyton Place. I know Madam President Niedrowski put a resolution to vote at the last caucus, and no one seconded it. This is not political. I repeat, not political. Excuse me. It's the right thing to do. Since I was a productive professional employee who saw what this person did when he was, repeat, when he was in the building, I have a right to know why this was done. I had to resign my position, not only of COVID, but because of the stress I encountered with this extremely unprofessional and lying individual. I have a right to know, and so does every other taxpayer in this city, since I am assuming it was taxpayer dollars that gave him the package. Can someone please let me know where the funds came from? If it came from COVID dollars for salaries, that would be doubly unethical and a misappropriation of funds. Two times over. Further, it is also a violation of current policies and law. We all know that. To boot, he never became a resident during the allotted time period, got away with it, doing his journalistic job while getting paid by taxpayer money. We all know it. Got away with it. He was using city property to do another job other than what he was getting paid for. I ask each of you, does that deserve a package? If so, I must be entitled to a double one. Even though I was harassed and pushed out of the department to work with the tax assessor's office during the revow, I still showed up to do my job. Although they did say it was already pre-planned, but what a coincidence. I could honestly say, I enjoyed my time at the tax assessor's office. I learned a lot, and the staff was extremely professional and helpful as I was learning the ropes. Oh, and something good did come out of it. I enhanced my knowledge. Where is my package? Yes, I know you cannot discuss personal issues. However, I'm asking the council again to please remember your oath to the people of the city of Bayonne, and please pass this resolution. Please put your big boy panties on, boxers or briefs or whatever you choose, and do the right thing. Vote in favor of the resolution for a non-political investigation. I am so tired of people moving out of this town, and nobody seems to care. My little town, the great city of Bayonne, I used to call the gem of Hudson County, and as Andrew Novielli noted many years ago, Godstown, well, it no longer exists. Let's face it, and honestly, with all this stuff becoming political, it will never be again. So sad. If you build it, they will come. Who said that? I don't even remember. We are deteriorating before our eyes. It's time for a change, a change that will reverse what happened. We need people in the administration that care, truly care, and are not planning to leave the town in one, two, three, four years. Oh, excuse me, five. It's only 2021. As I have learned, people that have a true stake in the town and put their personal aspirations and careers aside, people that truly care, all, all the people who live here full-time, I repeat, the people that live here full-time. I should hold this question for the budget. I'm sorry, I did that already. Now, I would like to ask each council member their opinion on how they feel that out-of-towners are being hired, no stake in our future or present. Please, how do each of you feel about this ordinance and ruling and law that is on the books and not being followed? Don't you have an obligation to the residents after taking an oath for the people? Madam President, may I ask each of you how you personally feel, politics aside, that out-of-towners are being hired? People are being silent because of their personal careers. Ladies and gentlemen, remember your oath. Political favors and nepotism have to stop, and it has to stop now. May I ask each of you respectfully? How do you feel about this?
If they want to answer, they can. If they don't, it's really not a question-answer, it's just a comment section.
Nobody's going to answer. Very interesting. Now, I've been receiving phone calls in the last couple of days, and one last night that really took me for a loop. Yes, I know there's two interns working that don't live in Bayonne. I mentioned that at a previous council meeting, that there, there were plenty of college students studying law that would love to work for the city of Bayonne. Anyway, that didn't happen, and we all know, and I understand supposedly, one of them is staying past the summer. And they're going to utilize an address in Bayonne. We, it is not a legal address. I repeat, they are not legally living in Bayonne. If this is true, and I sincerely mean this, if this is true that the individual who works for the city of Bayonne, who offered this individual one of their addresses, I repeat, one of their addresses to this individual, it would be the most unethical, illegal act that the city administration would allow to occur. And since the individual would be getting paid out of taxpayer dollars through the budget, I am sure there would be a legal issue. Also, I heard last night from another source, that two more people were hired in a department that do not live in Bayonne. Ladies and gentlemen, what are we doing? There's an ordinance and law on the books, and we're not abiding by it. Again, please remember your oath. Get to the bottom of these rumors and ensure that everybody who's hired to work for the city lives here permanently. If there are good employees, grandfather them in, but don't do it every single time. Based on the budget, there was fifty-two new employees hired from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one during COVID? How many of them live in Bayonne? They have no stake here. Thank you for listening, but really, I'm tired of being a broken record, and none of you will respond. You just sit there and stare at me.
I got a response for you.
Yes?
I, I don't believe in hiring people that don't live in town. That's my.
Thank you, Councilman Lappalusa.
But, a couple of things, if I could just clarify from what you just said. The discussion with the mayor that I had recently said that it was the largest increase in people in Bayonne in like eighty years, it was like nineteen twenties, it's longer than that. So we're up over seventy thousand people. We're up over seventy thousand people now, and it's the largest increase since like the twenties.
Right.
So, I know you said about people moving out, but those numbers don't actually agree with that.
Well, people are moving out, Mr. Lappalusa. They're moving out.
People are moving out, but people are moving in. And I'm not, I'm not here to argue back and forth with you. I appreciate that you send emails, but you worked here, so you should know my email address. So I don't appreciate the fact that somebody has to hand me a copy all the time.
I don't have any.
It's the first letter of my first name, my last name, at bayonj.org. Like everybody else that you send, but you don't send it to me.
No, I didn't send an email, Mr. Lappalusa.
You sent several emails. I have, I have the emails with all their addresses, and you keep saying, pass this on to Gary.
No, it was text message, sir. I have to, I have to.
I have the copies, but anyway, I don't, I'm not here to argue with you. As far as, I appreciate that you want to be the advocate and the watchdog and all that, and you, you send me pictures, and you send pictures to the rest of the council about the boulevard and the county. You know, I'll forward them and see what they're doing. What, you ask me questions about your tax dollars, I can't answer as far as what your, all your tax dollars are going for the county. I know, I worked for the county, I can tell you what they're doing in the parks, but I can't tell you about the rest of it. But I will forward it to them, and maybe they'll give you an answer.
I always.
And I have no problem giving you my opinions, whether they agree with other people in the administration or not. I've never been afraid to do that. So, I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Lappalusa.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is a resident from 102 Avenue A. I'm sorry, you didn't print your name.
Lucia. Good evening. My name is Lucia Frazier. I live at 102 Avenue A. I'd like to talk about the street sweeper. They come down on Fourth twice a week. Why isn't there water in it?
Mr. Carter?
All it does is swirl dirt.
They should have water on at all times.
Tommy, there hasn't been water in that street sweeper in a year, in a year.
I'll check into it, but the same sweeper that does the boulevard also does Avenue A. We only have three sweepers. There's two that go out. One is a reserve. It's an older model that may go out when the other ones are in for repair. We definitely need to get another street sweeper, but that's for a different discussion. I'll find out why it's going down Avenue A without any water. It may be, it runs out, or it could be one of the older ones, but we'll definitely find out. But they're all the same sweepers, so if it's going down Avenue A with no water, I would get calls about it going down the boulevard also. Not saying that it's not, but in some instances, maybe it does run out of water, and rather than the guy go back to fill up, he might just finish the route. But if that's the case, I will find out, because yeah, all it does is make a mess. I agree with you a hundred percent. Sweeper should have water in it at all times, and if for any reason, we'll find out. And I'll get back to you. I have your number, so I'll give you a call.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have one other question. Has there been any revolution about the street light on Fourth and Avenue A?
Yes, there is one coming. Amazon has agreed to, or the property owners there, to agree to put it in. And they're also going to make a few other changes, what we're asking them, because they needed to come back before the city to make some changes on their property. And we told them that before we would approve any other changes, they had to put the light in, and they have agreed to it. I don't think we sent it out to bid yet, and I think it's still waiting, because there's going to be a couple other things that we're asking for. We're asking them to close Bayview over the night hours, so that the people, so that gate would only be open eight to eight, eight AM to eight PM, and that way, after hours, because most of their workers are, come in during the day, and deliveries come at night. So it wouldn't be that much of an impact, but it would make a big change for the people on Bayview not to have, as you know, because they drive Fisher House as they do mine.
Right.
Everyone has these new cars, these cars that have the mufflers cut off or something, and they're so loud, and they run over that sewer plate on Bayview that rattles, which sewers did go and make it tighter. But these are some of the things, concessions, we're asking them to make as good neighbors, and they have agreed. So there is the light coming. I'm just not really sure the timeframe of that.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Solari?
Good evening, Council. First thing I would just want to say is, I want to apologize for what happened last, last month. All right? Should have never happened, but it did, and I'm sorry to all of yous.
Thank you.
All right? We're all here to do the right thing. I just, it bothers me about the sweepers, like you just said, that they run without water, without water, from the start to the end. All right? Country Village has been getting dirty and dirtier day by day. I asked the mayor about side street sweeping, and it seems like it fell on deaf ears. Can we get somebody to clean up in Country Village, even the sides going towards 440, going towards the motel? All right? Public Works cleans the sewers, but they don't clean the sewers over there. That's part of Bayonne. Okay? It's piling up with all debris in the sewers. So when it rains, it gets flooded fast. The last time those sewers have been dredged had to be before this administration came in, way before this administration. Okay? They got to be done again. You know how much construction has been up in that area? How much dirt and rocks fell in there? I don't know if any of yous drive that way. I mean, if you guys do drive that way, you drive that way? I mean, do you see the holes near, near the gas station and the, and the, and the, what you call it, the car wash? They're huge. If somebody in the left lane cuts you over, you're going right into those holes. I don't know who, I know it's not part of us. You call the state, they say it's Bayonne. You call Bayonne, they say it's Jersey City. I don't know. I'm done with the running around. It seems like you're just going in a circle. So if somebody here could figure out how to do it, fine. Going back about a year ago or so, or maybe a year and a half ago, the state paved everything. But because public service was doing work over there, they stopped at one point, just before you're ready to go near the hotel. They stopped right there. Okay? They never came back now to finish the rest of it. All right? The sewers are up about an inch and a half, two inches high, and they have the tar around it. So when it rains, it has to fill up first till it goes in. So, that's another issue. Is the state going to come back and pave it? I mean, it's a shame that we have to keep sending our guys, Public Works out, to keep fixing the streets, because public service, when they did the construction, ruined it all. That was, there was nothing wrong with it. Their trucks and everything, the contractors' trucks, it was crazy. But we have to come to a solution now. And if you guys drive that, it's really a shame that none of yous really decided to make a complaint, or find out who's in charge of it. This is why we elect you people. Not that we, we see it. We don't want to keep making complaints. Gary, you're up in the dirt ward. You know, I mean, you should say, you know what? Oh, this is it. Is it because we're the last block in Bayonne? Because if it is, then you know what? Sell us to Jersey City, and we'll go to Jersey City.
We don't want to lose you.
No.
We don't want to lose you, no way.
Of course, you know why? It seems like, and I'm going to tell you something why, because it seems like I don't get the service. The only service I get that comes through that is the Bayonne Police Department. They do come in. I got to say one thing, they do come in. All right? Anything else, forget about it. I'm not going to get no other service unless Public Works comes out to do those potholes. And I don't think they have to be doing something that public service contractors and all them did all that, and the state stopped the paving. Okay. My other question is, in July, we had a big rainstorm. I don't know if anybody remembered that big rainstorm with the thunder and the lightning and everything. Okay, not knowing that the pump house was knocked out with power. And that happened because of, from Danford Avenue all the way up. But we all had lights. So whoever knew that the pump house was out? Well, we had about three hours of the heavy rain, look out the window, and the water is coming out of the sewers, all flooded. Okay? Because the pump house is out now. So everything filled up, and it's just pumping. A lot of houses got flooded that day. Thank God, I caught mine just in time. I mean, I got some water in the garage, but because the water was coming over the curbs, and it has to go somewhere. I thought it was like another Sandy again. I said, no way, this is not happening. Well, you make some phone calls. Well, you make some phone calls, all right? You call Suez. Suez says, you know, I didn't get, I'm sorry. I called Suez, I got a machine. If it's a problem, call 911. I'm not going to call 911. So I called the police department. We get the dispatcher, dispatcher goes, "What do you want me to do?" I said, "I don't want you to do anything, I just want you to try and get in touch with Suez, because I know everybody, all you guys all have different numbers than we all have on our."
I don't have any number for Suez.
Well, the city does itself. The city itself has a different number to get in touch with Suez, okay? Well, that wasn't the problem, that never happened. So the lady next door, and the lady down the block that really got hit with the most of it, called OEM, okay? Now, I got to say one thing, that's the only person that came up to Country Village to take a look. And I got to give Junior Feranti, that, for him coming up to do what he did was outstanding. He took all the information down. I said, "Junior, this has been going on for years." I said, "Maya Doria was supposed to put a generator up there. It stopped from the first, down the first ward, up to the second ward. Forget about the third ward, because you know why? It's the last block of Bayonne, all right? So call my councilman, all right? I don't get a return call. My brother gets the return call. He doesn't even live in the area. This is what I didn't understand."
Your brother was speaking to me about your case.
I understand.
That's why he got the call.
Because he got hired by the two people on the block to pump them out. So that's why he was in the area, or he wouldn't have ever been up there, okay? But if you, if you had a voicemail that I, we could leave a message, instead of being filled, it would be a different story. Well, I just want to say another thing. Mr. Feranti calls me back on Monday and says, "The ball is rolling." That's more than I got from any of my council people up in the third ward, all right? Mr. Feranti gets back to me again and says, "We're going to get something up there." Well, you know what? And I think it was like a week, a week and a half ago went goes by, I come down the ramp, and there's a generator there. I said, "Wow." I said, "You know, it's a portable one, it's not a permanent. I get a generator." So I call up Junior, I said, "Junior," I said, "There's a generator." He goes, "I was just going to call you to tell you that we, they ordered one up there for a permanent, and it's going to be there, but it's on back order because of everything that's going on." And I believe that. That'll take probably about six more months to a year before we get it, all right? So I want to say to Junior Feranti, thank you very much. Junior, thank you for your help, we all appreciate it up there. And you just don't understand, but we're always left out. We're always left out. It's not just our council person, it could be our large people, even when we had other, the other administrations way back, they don't come up there. The only time you guys come up is when it's election time, all right? There's a guy in Sycamore Road that's been having problems with the guy next door, gutted his whole house, dug out his basement, made it deeper, built a 12-foot shed in the backyard, all right? And you got to leave your name. The guy said, "I'm not leaving my name." Do you know how much money the city is losing because they want you to leave their name? And Mr. Carroll was up there, he knows he was there, and I think Mr. La Paluza was there, and nothing got done. They know the address, but this poor guy here, the guy gutted his whole house, gutted it, electrical, plumbing, everything. You know how much money we lost? And it's not just in, there's more in Country Village. I wouldn't call, because you know why? You guys don't care, I don't care. You know, that's how I feel. So just before I close again, I just want to say that not just that Junior Feranti is the OEM, maybe we should make him Mayor Feranti. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. By the way, I'll send an email to the mayor's office about your concerns with the potholes and the street cleaning, and, because that decision would have to come from him. So I'll just email it there, because we don't have the authority to enact any of that.
Absolutely. But maybe, is that a state, is that a state road there? Because where we come out to on 63rd Street.
Well, have them, the administration, the mayor's office will get the answer to that.
All right, thank you.
Dave, I just want to echo the council president's opinion. It would be a shame to lose you to Jersey City, even though you throw me under the bus at every meeting.
No, don't be ashamed, because you know what? You guys win, because I wouldn't have to come to a meeting no more.
I just wanted to say.
And you guys would be more happy.
Dave, your comments about.
The only person that would be very upset is my friend, Mr. Coffey.
It's hard to applaud you, man.
Because you know, we like to see each other once in a while, we never see each other.
Jersey City just called, they offered Liberty National, which we told them no.
I want to let you know, your comments about last month were appreciated, thank you. It was a very stand-up thing to do.
All right, thank you.
He's always good for a laugh.
Ms. Segalwitz?
Sorry about that. Donna Segalwitz, 93 Andrews Street. I just want to thank you for the consideration that you're going to give to Hunger Free, because they've helped everyone in this neighborhood, this town. They have gone.
Above and beyond everything. I just want to thank you very much for your consideration, and if there's anything that you need from us, we'll gladly help you.
No, thank you, thank you guys for all your volunteer work and for what you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
I'm going to take my mask off. Before I do, anybody remember Mad Comic Books? Remember Alfred Newman?
Yeah.
Right? How's that? My wife was embarrassed to come here, she said, "I don't know if it was because I was going to speak, or because I looked like this, but I fractured a tooth, I'm getting an implant, it takes a while." I'm married, I'm not dating, so. So anyway, I was just going to come here and listen, and lo and behold, I promoted, I went to all of Bayonne Facebook sites, and to tell people, encourage them to come here. And in doing so, I opened up Pandora's Box, all the comments, a lot of likes, a lot of complaints, and whatever. So then I wind up typing out a sheet, so I can be a little more focused on what I'm going to say, and sitting here now, I've got red markings, another pad, and I can't read my own writing. If you looked at it, you'd say, "He must be a doctor." Anyway, I like to be solution-based, so this is a solution-based presentation. But the first part, brace yourself, because I'm the messenger now, don't shoot me. So I posted on Facebook encouraging people to come, and these are some of the comments I got. The problem is, they listen, but they don't hear the residents. They do whatever they have decided to do before the meeting. These, I'm just reading verbatim, it's not me making a judgment. I've seen a parade of folks go up and make valid points against an item, and then a vote is taken without the council, discussing it amongst themselves, and it's "I, I, I." Not just this administration, all of them. Next, "Sorry, but going means nothing. Most of the subjects are already done, they are just putting things on the record." Next, "They had over 100 when they were fighting against the resident's property, and look what happened. Stupid building still went up." All right, so that's that. Now, what I think you guys need is marketing and PR, because you've got a lot on the plate, I could see that, and some of the things that are asked there are really not in your hands to answer. And so this is what I'm recommending. I like to look, like I say, I like, first of all, I don't even like to use the word "problem." Problem sounds like Atlas, you kind of in the world. I like to use "challenge." And also, I learned early on, if you go to your boss and complain, it's best you go in there and have some kind of solution, the recommendations. So this is what I'm suggesting, to give you a little PR image or whatever, because when you were looking for support, when you ran for the position, you were out there talking to people, putting up signs and whatever, and I don't think you abandoned them, but you know, you might want to maybe take a couple hours every week, just to walk around, you know? Get a map of your district, you get some exercise, knocking on a few doors, they'll think it's Jehovah Witness, and they'll be probably happy to see you when they say it's not. And, you know, also, you know, hear them, like somebody said, "You're listening but not hearing." I would recommend you take a clipboard and write their notes, some notes down about the concerns. And, you know, I think that's a good way to build up that relationship, because, you know, I have nothing bad to say here, and everybody's going to have, I'm going to call them challenges, and I can see that you're listening, but I think people have to know that, so maybe to face-to-face and say, "Wow, that's kind of cool. The guy's elected already, but he's still knocking on my door," whatever, you know? So I see you all the time, because your landscape being next door to me, so. That's all, and thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. All right, just so the folks understand, prior to this meeting, last week, there's a council caucus that's held. So ultimately, at that council caucus, our council president pushed for a vote calling for an investigation into a former employee, Mark Benamo. He was mentioned early on in Ms. Kadeski's comments, and I'm sure you've come across articles, you know, either in the paper or online. Mr. Benamo is alleged to have committed theft of service, collecting paychecks from the city of Bayonne months after he resigned. What we do know, and what we have known for months, was that Mark Benamo's last paycheck was the first week of April. This came from Mr. Coffey at April's council meeting. About a month after, or about a month ago, Hudson County View released a story on the same matter, and the reporter confirmed through the law department's employee, Donna Russo's email, that Mark Benamo resigned January 25th. These are two facts, not opinions, which should be sufficient enough evidence to look into the matter further. Unfortunately, like tonight, the council president didn't have the support of her colleagues to put an investigation request to a vote last week. And despite all this information being available to the public for at least 30 days, some council members commented that they needed time to study up on this. I can assure you guys, there's no exam tonight. However, there is a test to see if you guys are capable of doing what's right. I would like to ask each council member if they studied up on this matter, and if they're prepared to do what's right this evening. Councilman La Paluza, Councilman Perez, Councilman Carroll. On behalf of the residents of Bayonne, I'd like some answers, and really, the only way we can get answers here is to have an investigation. I don't understand why we wouldn't want to know if an employee was essentially stealing time, or if the mayor authorized a unique severance package that doesn't go with the standard that's in the contract of the employees. The other question is, how does this even happen? Who authorized this? Who signed off on it? There's questions of where this could have, you know, what department's responsible for it? We have a right to know that. Now, council members, when you were sworn in, you did take an oath to uphold the law, and I imagine part of your duty is to look into this matter. May I remind you that you serve your constituents, all of them, not just the ones you voted, that voted for you, or that show up at your fundraisers? And I wonder if, have you asked any of those constituents maybe what they may think on this matter? I got to be certain that they would want an explanation too. If I may play devil's advocate for a second, what is the risk? What could possibly happen by calling for an investigation? What's the worst-case scenario? Nothing bad could possibly come to the city of this. So ultimately, what are we waiting for? I'm going to ask the council president, ultimately, if she's willing to, to put the resolution back on the agenda, so that we can see which council members are willing to do the right thing. Because a week ago, you didn't have the public when you voted no. Now you got the public. So I want to see if you're still willing to not do the right thing in front of all the members in this, this audience here, and everybody watching at home.
Mr. Franco, it's actually on, it's R7.
Oh, okay, great. So I hope, in adding to that, I hope to encourage the council to vote, you know, for this, for this resolution, it's important. I think the public needs to know, there needs to be accountability, and I hope we don't end up with the same vote we ended up with last week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Good evening, Mike Morris, 123 Avenue C, Bayonne. I'd like to address three particular issues. I'll try to make it as quick as I can. In regards to Hunger Free Unity, I believe that Bayonne definitely, most certainly has the resources to work with them, to give them a particular site to set up on. My suggestion personally would be to try to work with the Bayonne Board of Education, being that they are, being that they have many locations, and they could possibly use these locations on a rotating basis every week to serve different areas of the city. I think it would be something worthwhile to pursue on their behalf, and hopefully, the Board of Education would be receptive to these needs, especially since many of the clients, recipients I should say, have school-aged children that attend schools here in Bayonne, and they most certainly are in need, and I have to tell you, the few times that I volunteered with Hunger Free Bayonne, Sharon and Melissa Matthews, things that I saw there were sometimes heartbreaking. You see young, young people with children, who to whom are most certainly in need. And in today's age, this should not be. But I will tell you this, that all of you, both organizations, in my opinion, do excellent work, and you're to be commended for it. I really sincerely mean that to all of you. It's very overwhelming, but it's also enlightening to see that there are so many people that care for others in need. Now going on to the second issue. It was mentioned regarding the police and the fire, contracts and salaries. This is my opinion, my opinion only. Whatever we pay for these services in the city of Bayonne is well worthwhile. I've never felt unsafe walking the streets. I can tell you that I have, at numerous times, needed the assistance of the Bayonne Fire Department and Police Department, and the response was phenomenal, especially when it came to a personal life-saving experience for myself. Again, people tend to forget the good that these individuals do until they reach out in dire need for them. For that brief moment, they are the absolute heroes, and then it's forgotten. Me personally, it's never forgotten. They are heroes. They're worth every penny, and I'm thankful that they're here. So again, I thank them personally for all that they do. I sincerely mean that too. Now, there was a young lady who spoke, I didn't catch her name, other than, she lived at 102 Avenue A. She spoke about the Amazon project on Fourth Street and Avenue A. I believe it was at that meeting, when the project was approved with conditions. One of the main conditions that I was very concerned about was... One of the main conditions that I was very concerned about was reinstalling the traffic light at Fort Street and Avenue A, which I had been waiting for, for some time now, especially since Amazon has been functioning for, I believe, well over a year, maybe a year and a half now at this point. There were some conditions that we also agreed to regarding this particular project. One of my main concerns was the traffic light, and, and the traffic study that was done by a gentleman named Mr. Steiger. When I asked him what criteria he had used, he told me that he had used some criteria that was 10 years old, which basically was flawed. I've testified before zoning boards of various towns when I was with Wakefront. And so I don't wanna say that I'm an expert, but I know what I'm talking about when it comes to the traffic studies. So my concern was the turning radius going in and coming out at the entrance to Amazon. Was it ever fulfilled in the agreement that was agreed to by the people from Amazon? And also, did they replace the trees that they took down on the property? It didn't have to be there, as I was told at the meeting. Could be somewhere in the city of Bayonne.
I can answer those, too. First of all, they, they did widen the driveway tremendously so that they could make the turn wide enough without going, so they did handle that, the in and out of the tractor-trailers at Fort Street. They did replace the trees. I think they were a little pathetic, a little Charlie Brownish. Some of them died. We had called and made them replace, the, the original agreement, they would plant five-foot trees, and they certainly were not five-foot trees. They're, here we are, three years later, and they're still not five-foot, I don't think. But we do keep on top of them, and they have replaced them as, you know, they died. I don't think they have a good irrigation system there for those trees, but they did, they did put the trees there.
Okay. Well, again, the most important factor here is the traffic light being reinstalled. Because when I questioned Mr. Steiger, he had no idea that that technically was a school zone, which it is, because how do the kids from Fort Street and Avenue A get to Henry Harris School unless they either walk or they're driven by their parents? So it is a school zone. And I believe that was one of the reasons that that traffic light actually was initially installed for that particular purpose. So with that being said, I'm happy to see that this was fulfilled, but I also wanna say thank you to you, Sharon Niedrowski, because the night that I had addressed my concerns regarding all these issues, you actually backed me up on it, and I thank you for that. I really do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And I agree with what you said, our fire and police are the best, so we're all thankful for their service.
Are there any hands raised?
I have Cheryl Riskart in the audience. You can come on, Cheryl. There's normally a sign-up sheet. I know this is Cheryl's first meeting, so I, I'm gonna assume she didn't know she had to sign up.
Good evening, counsel. What I have to say I'd like you to address to Mayor Davis. I moved into the Bayonne Housing Authority in 2016. By 2018, the harassment was so bad, I was vomiting up blood, going to the ER, I couldn't breathe every night, that, um, time after that, I had to sign out of my apartment and leave myself on the street. I've been trying to get an apartment in several housing units since then, for three years now, going on the fourth. The harassment has not stopped, physical and verbal abuse in the street caused by one individual through the internet. And I'm asking Mayor Davis to get in touch with the governor. This needs to stop, and I need my apartment back and my life back. No one in this room or outside this room is better than me. We are all human, and as the president says, we are all equal and should be treated equal. I, I was intubated about a month and a half ago. I stopped breathing. Thank God I was at the hospital when it happened, or today I wouldn't be here to speak about it. I love life. I love people. I'm asking Mayor Davis to do what he needs to do to get my life back on track, and whoever is involved in doing what is going on with me, it needs to stop. Thank God I have the Lord, or else I don't think, I really don't think I would be here That's really all I have to say right now, and probably will be back again. I don't, I don't know what else to say except that I have to live outside the 24th Street Medical Center every day, all night long, because of being scared that this might happen again, that I cannot breathe, and I refuse to die in the street because of some ugly person that is ahead of this harassment. Nothing to do with you, counsel. I love yous all, but I'm asking Mayor Davis for his help. He's the mayor of this town, Tom Mahan, the head of housing. You, you have to change. You have to change. You don't put a human being in the street to die, and that's what I feel like is happening, and it's a disgrace. I'm from Bayonne. I was raised, born and raised here. I love Bayonne, always loved the people, and a realtor, and somebody is demolishing my reputation, and they know who they are, and I, they know that I know who they are. That's all I have to say, counsel.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm sorry for what you're going through. Please stay safe, and we will relay the message to the mayor. Maybe someone from his office can reach out to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, going forward. And ordinance.
Nobody's online? Nobody's online, right? No hands?
We have two hands raised online.
Okay.
I'm gonna unmute George Ramirez.
Good afternoon, City. Last month, I was hit by a car crossing the street in Bayonne. I am a conscientious person. I am awake, alert, aware of my surroundings. I wanted to put what happened to me into context. Soon, we will have one of the most anticipated back-to-school openings ever. That whole first week of school, we gotta put traffic on lockdown, put up a banner on Broadway, put up electronic signs, encouraging drivers to slow down. The speed limit on Avenue C is 25 miles per hour. The speed limit on Candy Boulevard is 25 miles per hour. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. I actually like that idea. We should get with the Police Department of Public Safety, and it's a good idea to do a safe-driving campaign, slow down for a school opening. It's a, it's a good tie-in, so thank you for that suggestion. I think there was one other person.
And another hand up is Melissa Rodriguez, Avenue F.
Hi, good evening. Melissa Kadeski Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. First of all, I think what you all do is probably not easy at all by any means. Something I've always thought might be a good idea, and it's just a great suggestion. Clearly, as residents, we all have different issues, right? We all have different things we love. We all have different things we completely dislike, and I think as constituents, it's important to be heard. So have any of you thought about just having kind of board meetings where you can all just kinda get one-on-one? I know COVID poses a whole different challenge, but even having a virtual, using TetherView like you do now with your constituents, just to kinda get that one-on-one feeling. That way you can try to better understand and maybe better support and share your vision of the direction you want the city to go in with them, that they can do that with you. I just think it might help a little bit more and open lines of communication.
I think that's a great idea.
And it might help you all, too, all of you, probably very much enjoy just somewhat, maybe just hearing from your own board and having council-at-large join you, so thank you for your time, and I hope you can consider this suggestion.
Yes, thank you.
I, I would say it's absolutely a great suggestion, and it has borne fruit. I've had several board meetings with individuals that have reached out to me and then asked me to come to their block to look at a specific issue, which has then resulted in them coming to meetings and the issue being resolved. So absolutely a great idea, and we should do more of them in the future.
I've done several of those as well, and not just walking through the block, but I would say, I'm gonna be on your block, let's have a meeting, something like that. Doesn't always have to be in one place, one specific place, but I would be open to having something in one specific place.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing that. Like I said, I, I think we all wanna be heard ultimately, just like you guys wanna be heard, and communication's definitely a two-way street. So me, like I said, making it public, and, you know, Facebook is, is where it's at, right? So definitely using social media as an advantage to spread that word, and so what, you only get 10 people, maybe you get 10, 12, and it grows, and then hopefully we come up with some solutions as a city, for sure. So thank you again, all.
Thank you. I think that's it, Madeline.
Okay. Ordinance for introduction, ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance Amending Bond Ordinance O-17-2, finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, State of New Jersey on May 17, 2017, to reappropriate the amount of $286,670.98 and to reauthorize bonds or notes in the aggregate amount of $272,826.07 to undertake the acquisition of various equipment and non-passenger vehicles for the Police Department. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, September 22, and adored the E. Harrington Council chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Ms. Niedrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
O-7 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, and a resolution moved by Councilmember La Palusa fixing Wednesday, September 22, and adored the E. Harrington Council chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. This is to delete 11 restrictive parking zones. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
Consent Agenda for Communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C-1 through C-9. Are there any questions on the communications? No community questions? Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
And Consent Resolution for Officers' Reports is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within them to be adopted. It covers OR-1 through OR-2. Any questions on the officers' reports? And on the officers' report resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
Consent Resolution is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR-1 through CR-24. Are there any questions on the consent resolutions? On the resolutions, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
R-1 is authorizing the tax levy sale. It's moved by Councilmember La Palusa. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
R-2 is a resolution to call on the governor and the United States Congressional District from New Jersey to provide economic relief for the implementation of the U.S. EPA and the New Jersey DEP mandated long-term control plan for the combined sewer overflow.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
R-3 is awarding the contract for improvements to the 28th Street Park to personal geodanno construction of Kennelworth, New Jersey, for a total contract amount of $539,841.50.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
R-4 is being withdrawn. R-5 is a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez authorizing a two-year extension with Borka Transmission Services for the period 9/1/21 through August 31, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $33,334 chargeable to vehicle maintenance account.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
R-7 is a resolution amending ordinance number O-21-31 entitled an ordinance to exceed the municipal appropriations limits and establish a cap bank. It is to correct a squivengers error in paragraph 1 and 4.
Move it.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions? And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski.
Aye.
R-7 is a resolution moved by the council president requesting that the mayor authorize and conduct an investigation into the legality of the separation agreement between Mark Benamo and the city, and if the agreement violated city policies and procedures. Who'd like to second?
Before I second, is this already an investigation out there, or is this different from what we have?
It's the same thing.
Yeah, I, I did send multiple emails the day after our executive session and to see if they were doing an investigation, and I got no answer. And before the last meeting, I sent another letter to the outside law firm and to Mr. Coffey and got no answer. So I just wanted to be on the record. I think this helps reassure the people that it's being done, and it restores confidence to the residents, and it actually outlines, I don't know what the investigation being done is, and I don't know that they're not required to give a report back to the council ever, but this resolution would, eh, require that. So yes, we got this tonight. I got this tonight when I showed up, that an investigation has been started, but like I said, there's no details. I had sent multiple emails and got no responses, so until I walked in tonight, I didn't know. So I don't know if this happened in response to what I did, the resolution I put forward, but I still think that this resolution is necessary because it outlines exactly what it is we want them to investigate, what things we think been violated. And additionally, it also says that we're requiring the, requesting the mayor provide the council with the findings. Otherwise, they don't have to provide the council with the findings. As you know, we're a separate body. We don't get entitled to that stuff unless specifically axed. So that is why I still, even though that's out there, I am still, and, you know, think we should do this resolution. Are we voting on this or just moving on?
I'm still waiting for a second.
We have a comment. We have a...
A second. Were you going to second it?
Sure. If this investigation doesn't fit what they're asking for, then yeah, I'll second it.
We have a comment before we vote.
You want to take a comment? Okay.
Yes.
Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. I just want to just leave with this. If somebody accuses me of something, let's have an investigation, right? Worst-case scenario. Very simple. So I mean, it's not like, like I said before, nothing bad of this comes of the city. So let's just have the investigation, find out what goes on. The constituents will be happy, residents of Bayonne, everybody be happy. We'll know what actually happened. Thank you.
Ms. Kudresky.
Come on, guys. Do the right thing. Do the right thing for the future of the administration, for the future of the future administrations coming down the line, and for the future of your careers. Election is 2022. This will go down in history as the most terrible thing that you, as a council, would have done if you do not vote in favor of this resolution. I can assure you...
Can I make a comment? Couple, I have a question about this also, but how can it not be political when you're talking about elections? I think that's very political, what you just said.
It is not, Mr. LaPalooza.
It absolutely is.
It's your ethical issue. You're not being ethical and just in this situation.
Excuse me, you had your chance to speak. It's my turn to speak. You don't get a question and answer back and forth there.
Well, you asked me a question, I'm responding to you.
No, I'm, you know what? It's a rhetorical question, it doesn't need your answer. Tell me how it's going to affect an election, and tell me it's not political. This, this letter that we got is from Alan Roth, who we all spoke to at a closed session. So this letter that I'm speaking about, I can at least say what's in the letter. It says that, I don't know if somebody else wants to read it, but it says that about a month ago, that he met us in an executive session with the council about the issue of one of the employees, and that he's pulled about 40 employee files dating back to 2017, and he's in discussion with personnel, and that there were some personal matters and staff vacations, and with the amount of files that had to be pulled, that's why there was a delay in this. So if we vote for this, R-7, saying yes, is that saying we're in agreement to have Alan Roth do the investigation that he's already started?
Well, I would guess so.
I would just like a clarification from...
I don't know, like we don't, like I don't know exactly what this, he's investigating. My resolution actually outlines exactly what I would like to be investigated, the ordinance that we passed, past practices, vacation time. I don't know what this deals with, because as, I'm shocked we all read it and could act on this today when we got it at such short notice that it's happening, because last week no one could act on something we knew for a month. But again, and against, against...
Again, I didn't say I was acting on it, I'm asking a question.
And I'm just saying, and for me, I don't know. I don't know exactly what's being, I'm reading what you got. Like I said, I got here at 22:07 this afternoon, or this evening, I had to go ask some questions about the budget, and then I came in and found this on my chair. So I don't know, but I, the reason why I still like to pass the resolution is because I'm asking for specific things to be investigated, and I'm also asking for a report to be given. And I'm asking on the mayor, because as you know, we were told only the mayor can call for such a, such an investigation. And I don't even know that it says that the mayor called on this here. So that's, that's my reasoning for, and it, and so if it is, so then what's the harm? We're just, we're just authorizing what's already being done. Is there any, I don't know. That, that's my reason for, I understand what we're reading here, but I don't know that this offers me enough to know exactly what they're investigating, as where the resolution is quite clear on the three facts that I think need to be investigated. We still have a comment, you can come on up. We're still in public comment.
Patrick McManus, 97 West 29th. I think, if you want to clarify, I think the vote is on transparency, right? Like, because this will authorize the mayor, or you're asking the mayor to authorize the investigation, and then they will have to...
Report back to us.
So the vote is on transparency. The vote, the investigation is happening, whether you vote on it or not. But if you vote on it, we'll all know. And Ms. LaPalooza, everything is political. You're in a political job. Everything is political.
I'm, I'm not the one saying it's not political.
Yeah, but everything is political, and this, this will, this will be one of the many things leading up to 2022 for a lot of you guys who are running again. So, I mean, let's vote on transparency here, guys. Let's all see what it is. It's happening anyway. What's the harm in letting constituents know what's going on? And then where does that lead to? Where does that lead to? Where does that lead to? Because I don't think it stops right here. And if you do the investigation, that we're not going to know what's happening, and we're not going to know where it, where it leads to, and probably this will hold, open up a can of worms. And maybe that's why some people won't vote on it. Thank you.
And so the mayor could actually ask Alan Roth to do the investigation?
Alan Roth is already doing the investigation.
That's what I'm saying.
Based upon what took place in the closed session.
Again, again, we have, we just received this today, and again, I don't, if this, even so, we, I just think this, passing a resolution, like Mr. McManus said, it goes to transparency and gives, restores confidence in the residents that we are doing our job in calling something out that could be improper, and that we are asking to be notified of results, because by, by definition, as we heard repeatedly in that executive session, we are not entitled to that type of information. Only the mayor can provide it with us, and I don't know that he will agree to provide us with it. This formalizes it. That's all I'm asking for, a formalization of the request. And if it's happening already, well, then it's just, a lot of times, like how we affirm and ratify things, it's kind of like that. But, you know, that's just my opinion. We all have our own opinions. That's why we all have our own vote. And I'm just voting here for transparency and giving the residents some confidence. Are there any other, any hands online?
Yes.
Mike Morris.
Yeah, we did have one hand raised online. One meeting, George Rehearsal.
One, one thing to consider is the cost of an investigation. The cost of the investigation is more than the alleged overcompensation. That's something to think about. Because if you do an investigation, you're going to need an outside firm, lawyers might get involved. So you don't want the cure to be greater than the deal. That's all.
I do agree with you. We do know what the cost is, and we just heard from the law director that, and we received this letter today, that they, we do indeed have an outside law firm doing the investigation, but I just like to give my opinion on that. I never believe it's too costly or expensive to prevent wrongdoing. No matter what the cost is. That's just my personal opinion. Just, that's just my personal opinion. We don't, we don't say we're not going to go after little things, and then they become big things, because what's right is right regardless of the cost. My personal opinion.
How, how much is the cost?
I don't know. We have a contract with this offer, they, they, they're doing a number of investigations for us. I don't know what their hourly rate is, and I don't know what the, how much time they're going to spend on it. But apparently they're doing it already anyway. This is more just of a formality, I guess, and a, of it. Oh, Mr. Morris.
Mike Morris, 123 Avenue, New York. Just like a clarification, was there a previous investigation that had taken place?
No. No.
Okay. According to what I read on social media regarding the judge's ruling, without naming names...
This has nothing to do with the judge's ruling. This is just strictly about a financial severance package.
I understand that too.
That we don't do. So it has nothing to do with any other case.
In all fairness, at this point, from, as I said, what I read, I believe that it'd probably be more prudent to wait until this case is adjudicated in the courts, if it ever reaches the courts, before it's tossed onto the taxpayers' back for monetary damages. God knows what it could amount to, depending on what. But again, again, from what I read, a lot of it was third-party hearsay, not admissible. I'm quite familiar with the law, because I worked for a judge for 16 years. So I think that it'd be more prudent to...
With all due respect, Mr. Morris, this is not related to any other litigation, though, I'm not aware of.
Please, 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 don't interrupt me at this point, because I'm not, I don't interrupt you, and this is important to me.
Okay, I just...
God only knows what this could amount to in dollars and cents. I'm not saying that someone's right or someone's wrong. I'm looking down the middle. But I don't have tunnel vision. I have common sense. So I believe I know what I'm speaking about. If these monetary damages amount to some astronomical number, who's going to pay for it? The taxpayers. You, you can't give us a number right now as to what the attorney's fees are going to cost at this point, because no one knows. So I believe that it should be adjudicated in the courts first, then if somebody wants to do something, after that, come back and do it.
Thank you, but...
And please, you wanted to say something.
I just want to say that this is not really, this is not related to any lawsuit that's going on with the city. This is totally about...
It absolutely is.
It's...
It's verifiable in the media. It absolutely is. There's no, there's no offense of a bus stop.
It's about a severance package and a payout of vacation time, or sick days.
And again, it's, it's still political.
Okay, all right.
We do know it's political. Come on. Let's be honest with each other. We're not children here. And listen, I like to get along with everybody. It is political, but it should never be political when it comes down to the expense of the taxpayers.
Agreed.
Yeah.
100%.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's what I agree on.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Michael. How many jobs, Michael, how many jobs do you have? Every time you come up here, you tell me you work for a judge, you did this.
You're dispraved.
How old are you, really? How old are you?
I've worked for a judge for 16 years.
Could, okay.
Listen, I know it, I know it's very late, Mr. Morris. I respect your comments. However, this is not have anything, what my comments are, has nothing to do with the lawsuit that's going on with another party.
I wasn't attacking your comments, it's my opinion.
The, the salary that this person received was taxpayer dollars when he did not earn that money. And I am asking each and every one of you, from an ethical perspective, we already utilized taxpayer dollars, or hopefully not COVID salary dollars, to give this guy a package. Raise my taxes $10 to pay for it. It needs to be investigated by a third party that has no, no issue with either side. It needs to be focused and determined who authorized this package, why they authorized this package, and I'm not going to say anymore, because I know why this guy was hired to begin with. It's ridiculous. Absolutely atrocious that you gentlemen will not vote to a investigation that will take care of this, and I could breathe. Truly, do your job, remember your oath, for the people. I'm not the only one asking you to do this. President Nadrowski is asking it to clear the issue up, right, wrong, or indifferent. It needs to be taken care of once and for all. Just do your job.
You ready to vote?
Yes.
On the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
It's been moved and seconded, this is the vote?
Yes.
It's happening. Everything that has been asked for is happening. This issue is going on. There's an investigation underway. We've met, we've seen this. It has occurred. To do this seems redundant. The way in which this issue was brought up and introduced at last week's meeting was in itself political, and a political stunt. And it's, it was, and then it was followed up by a comment, and it's one thing when it comes from the public to say, "Put on your big-boy pants," or whatever else. It's another thing when it comes from the head of this body to suggest, and impugn the honor of its members, to suggest that we're engaging in something political, when in fact, the very nature of this is a political move that doesn't need to occur, it is redundant. To do so, to start a second investigation on an issue that is already being investigated, and to expend, let me get a breath, taxpayer dollars, in addition to any taxpayer dollars being expended already, would not be good governance. There's been a lot of talk about do your job and fulfill, fulfill your oath. That's what I'm doing. By voting no, that's what I'm doing. An investigation is underway. If you'd like to call for Mr. Roth to provide us with the proceeds of that investigation, which is what I thought occurred prior, that's one thing. But to engage in a new investigation seems to me ridiculous. So I vote no. And I would hope that an apology would be issued for the suggestion that any member of this dais was engaging in politics.
All right, so if I could just clarify something. By saying yes to this, right, this resolution, it's just reaffirming what this letter is saying already, except that we're going to get, the council's going to get to see the investigation findings. Is that right?
Without giving away too much of what happened in closed session, the charge was given to the attorney to do an investigation.
Which is happening already.
Correct.
And would this resolution not call for the mayor to engage another group in the investigation?
So it doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be a third investigation. This may be the one that the mayor calls on. So I don't know what the downside of this would be for voting no on that.
It hasn't been made clear that this is the same investigation. What if the mayor engages...
It's up to the mayor to decide. This is exactly what the resolution says, authorizing the mayor to do that.
I voted, and as far as the issue of transparency goes, we're on camera, and the investigation's occurring.
Mr. Galais.
Everybody's going to start fighting over this here vote. It is being investigated, I get it. All I guess Sharon wants is the answer, the proper answer that came over, right?
That's all we're looking for, is the third-party investigation.
So, just, we're going on with the investigation? Yes, just keep it going, that's it.
So it's a yes, Mr. LaPalooza, or Mr. Galais?
Hey, now you're going to confuse my name?
She wants to know your vote, just tell her your vote. Is it where you are, yes?
I didn't tell her, yes.
Okay. She's asking you. You gave me a statement, you gave me a statement with a yes in it.
Okay. I always want to do what's...
definitive no or yes?
Oh, yeah, yes.
It's late.
I always want to do what's right by the people. I wasn't looking at an expense for this since the investigation's going on. I asked legal counsel if there was any other downside besides maybe an expense to this. I don't see another downside, I'm going to vote aye.
Mr. Perez.
I'm a little concerned about how this resolution was presented to us. You are the council president, none of the other four council people were given any advance will give any advance notice about this resolution or the more investigation until you drop down on us at the end of caucus meeting. And it is not likely, just, you talked about it at the meeting, you had full, you fully prepared the type, the type resolution, yet you didn't talk to any of us before you tried to introduce it. We had a closed session, I remember that. Last month, we were advised that Mr. Roth, our labor council, was looking into this already. There is no need to put this resolution into effect. The review is already underway. It is pure politics, I'm sorry to say. I say that we should wait for Mr. Roth to analyze it. I don't know. And I got a question. Steve Galloway, when he came back, did anybody, did he receive a package? Yes or no, Mr. Roth?
I don't know. It has to do with this, we're in the...
That was from the, that was from the MUA.
He worked for the MUA at the time, he said. But, thank you.
Ms. Nadrowski?
I'd just like to say, yes, I did walk this on to a caucus meeting. I don't, I know our caucus meetings, we just blow through them, but a caucus meeting is a working session. So I do realize I was presenting it for the first time, but that is the time, a caucus meeting by definition, and by the way, it's supposed to be used, is where you actually vet and have your discussions and decide. So yes, I did walk it on at that meeting and I didn't let any of my colleagues know, but that's the purpose of the caucus meeting, right? To introduce stuff. And that's the time, that meeting took, I think, 10 minutes last Wednesday? We had hours then to discuss it and, and, and talk about whatever you needed because that is the purpose of the caucus meeting. And that's why I didn't, I avoided at the caucus meeting. I didn't come and walk it on here to side, you know, bar anybody or whatever the term you're using. It was, that's the working meeting where you actually work and discuss and you talk about stuff that's added onto the agenda. So that was the exact reason why it was introduced at the caucus, to allow for that discussion and not walked on at a regular meeting where it wouldn't really be appropriate to have that discussion. So I do, I vote aye for transparency.
And the resolution passes. Okay. Ed one, is a resolution increasing the contract with Bespoke Health LLC for an additional amount of $1,600, $600,000 for the total contract amount not to exceed $3,500,000 for a period of one year commencing April 21st through April 22nd. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Ed two has been withdrawn. Ed three is accepting the state fiscal year 2020 strengthening local public health capacity grant in the amount of $291,042.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Ed four is accepting the state fiscal year 2021 body worn camera grant in the amount of $452,436.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Ed five is authorizing change order number one to amend the garbage contract with A and L disposal to Ed 20 10-yard dumpsters for the use at nine housing authority locations for a total amount of $4,200 monthly.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Just want to let everyone know on this that that money will be reimbursed to us that we're spending by the housing authority. So that's not going to come out of taxpayers' money. Aye.
Ed six is authorizing the mayor and/or his designate and the city clerk to take any and all steps and execute any and all documents necessary to effect, to effect a shared service agreement in substance between the Bayonne Housing Authority and the city of Bayonne for the 20 10-yard dumpsters to be located at various Bayonne Housing Authority locations for a 28-month period commencing September 1, 21 through December 31st, 2023, with two additional one-year options for renewals.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
I have two more. It is a resolution amending the agreement with Howard S. Levine in his capacity as the employee, player of the New Jersey Medical Health Associates LLC. What is he doing for us?
We had Dr. Levine as an individual. It should have been through the company rather than, as an employee of CarePoint.
Oh, okay. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And the last one is a resolution authorizing the cancellation of the liens at 190-200 West 54th Street consistent with the memorandum of understanding.
Move it.
And second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And I have nothing else. Jay, if you have nothing else, I'll take a motion. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
And on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.